Mic check. Can everyone hear me both in the room and online? Thank you. If someone online can give us a thumbs up, thank you, Member Chang. Okay, this regular meeting of the Alamoana Kakaako Neighborhood Board is now called to order at 6:03 PM. Thank you, everyone, for being here. The purpose of the Neighborhood Board system is to encourage civic engagement, to make our neighborhood a great place to live, play, work, and thrive. With that being said, we are going to do roll call with the board members that are in attendance. Okay, roll call. Chang.
Present.
Chi. Here. Berenger. Here. Davis. Burinis. Lee. Rice. Mariano. Six members present. We have Quorum. Thank you, Camilia. Moving on to public safety reports, if we could have the Honolulu Fire Department to report on neighborhood ongoings.
My name is Cleo Young. I'm the captain on Engine Two. I have the statistics provided below for the confirmed number of incidents in the Neighborhood Board's geographical area for the previous month. Okay, how's that?
There you go.
Is that good? Okay. So incident statistics for August of 2024. We had two nuisance fires, sixteen activated alarms, one hundred and twenty-six medical emergencies, two motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, two mo- excuse me, eight motor vehicle crashes or collisions, and one hazardous material incident. Nuisance fires include rubbish fires outside of a structure or vehicle. I'll go over the fire safety tip for the month. For this month, it's move over for emergency vehicles. Drive with caution and obey all traffic laws, including the move over law, to help protect our first responders while performing their duties near or on a roadway. This is more than a public courtesy, it's the law. Hawaii Revised Statutes 291C-27 requires a driver of a vehicle that is approaching an emergency vehicle that is stopped for an emergency investigation of possible traffic violation, rendering assistance to a police officer or other official duties as indicated by the flashing emergency lights of the stopped emergency vehicle. Shall slow down to a reasonable and prudent speed that is safe under the circumstances of an emergency road situation ahead. If necessary, the driver shall come to a complete stop before making a lane change under paragraph two. Paragraph two, make a lane change into the adjacent lane if necessary, and if it is safe to do so, or if possible, to two lanes over, which leaves one lane between the driver and the emergency vehicle. Note, emergency vehicle means police, fire, EMS, ocean safety, freeway service patrol, tow trucks, and even some state and county vehicles while personnel are working. Any questions?
Thank you, Captain Yang. Questions from the board? Member Mariano?
Captain, thank you for the report. Just for clarification, because I've seen this done on Pensacola and also Pe'ikoi, particularly during peak periods, reference the law. Particularly during the peak period coming up on Pe'ikoi, you know, and I see emergency vehicles trying to get back up on Pe'ikoi so they can get on the freeway to get to the hospital, or vice versa, from Pensacola coming down. Sometimes the traffic is so bad, there's no place for vehicles to make way, and then it becomes a challenge. So for clarification, sometimes a vehicle might be right at the intersection. Okay, right? Coming up on Pe'ikoi, traffic's coming on South King Street, and so they might not stop, but to make way, is it proper for the driver to go across the intersection so that can make way for any emergency vehicle as long as it's safe to do so, to do that? Because I think in some cases, drive- some drivers, some new drivers, might be hesitant to do that because they don't want to get a ticket.
If it's safe to do so, then yeah. Just to clear the traffic lane for the emergency vehicle to pass through. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Mariano. Any other questions from the board? Community? Captain Yang, thanks for being here this evening. Honolulu Police Department with Lieutenant Arnold Seguso.
Good evening, Chair Lee and everyone in attendance. Lieutenant Arnold Seguso representing the Honolulu Police Department District One Community Area Responsibility. Thank you, guys, for your guys' time and patience, and the information I'm providing for you today is the statistics for your particular area. I know you guys' agenda is full, so I'm going to get right into the stats for the month of August. So motor vehicle thefts, it's up to twenty-five. From the previous month, it was thirteen. Burglaries, it's down eight. From the previous month was eleven. Thefts, one twelve. From the previous month, ninety-three. U M Vs or car break-ins, twenty-nine. Previous month, thirty-two. Assaults is twenty-two. Previous month was twelve. Six assaults were four. Previous month was five. Graffiti cases were one. The previous month was one. Drug offenses, six. Previous month was thirteen. Total cost for your particular area is three thousand nine hundred and twenty-one compared to four thousand ninety-one. So there is a criminal breach in regards to motor vehicle thefts at this point in time. We're at twenty-five for this past month of August. Previous to that was thirteen. We've already been taking measures in order to combat those issues prevailing. So we participated, District One participated in the Badges and Buckets event at Walmart Keamoku the first weekend of September. At that location, they raised over sixteen thousand dollars over the three days for Special Olympics. I want to send out great thanks and gratitude to the public, especially those people that donated and came down and participated for this great cause. Upcoming events for your district will be the Aloha Parade Festival that will be happening on September twenty, this Saturday, this coming Saturday. The parade will be getting set up early in the morning at 6:00 AM, and they will be starting at Alamoana Beach Park going through Waikiki and ending at Kapilani Park. Please expect road rules and lane closures. Please leave early if you need to be somewhere that day. The safety tip for the month of September is regarding securing vehicle loads. We at HPD have been responding to a lot of calls of debris on our roadways and freeways, some of which happens often on Alamoana Boulevard. It is due to not securing our belongings effectively. We found all kinds of things on the roadway, especially hard hats, coolers, cooler lids, plastic chairs, playpens, surfboards, and even Christmas trees. These items become an extreme hazard for motorists, especially motorcyclists. We're asking our community members to take some time and patience to secure loose items in the bed of your truck or on your roof racks. Motor vehicle fatality count, same time this year is twenty-eight, and same time last year it was thirty-eight. So we want to keep that downward trend as low as possible. At this point in time, I'm going to yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board members and the public attendees.
Lieutenant Seguso, thank you. Vice Chair Rice.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant Seguso. I have a request, please. On Oahu Street between Coral and Kiabe Street, on the Malka side of Salt Complex, at the corner closer to Kiabe Street, it's a trolley stop. There are constantly cars parked there for extended lengths of times. There are delivery trucks that cross over the bicycle lane, and the trolleys can't access to pick up their guests, and it's constant. I know on the Malka side of Oahu Street, they took away the meter, so there's no parking there anymore. So people are taking advantage, if you will, and parking there. And if maybe we could pay a little bit more attention, so the word gets out that that's not- there's no parking there. It's a red curb, and they constantly do it, and it's a problem. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'll relate that information to my Day Watch officers, so they can make PR checks so that one location. First of all, they shouldn't be blocking like these delivery trucks. I know they're kind of wide, extended. They shouldn't be blocking the bicycle lane. I know how Kakaako is trying to make that a bike-friendly location. So I'll pass that information on to Day Watch to check it out.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Member Mariano?
Lieutenant Seguso, thanks for the report. Just a quick question. On, as I mentioned to the Honolulu Fire Department, the increase of traffic, as we have more of these condos starting to open up, my concern, as I've been always talking about, is the infrastructure and also the traffic. My question to you is, is the increase in traffic, is that impeding the response time to to respond to residents' calls during 911? And the other thing is the the speed bumps, that's supposed to be a calming factor. Some of the speed bumps are low, and so, you know, you can see these bicyclists on those electrical bicycles coming down, and they're doing wheelies, and they're making it so dangerous that drivers are having a hard time to negotiate, but particularly citizens in ADA who are walking with the wheelchair, the legitimate ones. So could you elaborate on what can be done to assist the citizens in those areas?
I'll attack the first question first. So in regards to the condos opening up and increased traffic in the District One area, I can only speak for District One, but our response time on the nationwide average is very low. Normally, our response times to calls is between one and three minutes. Usually on a mainland calls, maybe it's because of the geography and how wide it is, it's almost up to ten. So actually, if there is any effect of it, obviously, traffic always affects response time, but I don't think at this point in time, it's affecting it to the point where we cannot service the public efficiently. In regards to the speed bumps, speed bumps and e-bikes, so I'm pretty sure that there's some sort of legislation coming out with the, in regards to the e-bikes, on more regulations, more clarifications on what is considered an e-bike and what is considered an electric motorcycle, if we could call it. So that is soon coming. As soon as we get clarification, HPD is going to pass it on, all, you know, pass that information on to patrol officers, and we're going to start doing more enforcements in regards to those stunters, as we call them, on patrol when they stunt on those bikes. It's very hazardous. We had a fatality several months ago. We have numerous motor vehicle collisions where they're in voluntary contact with moving vehicles and even with pedestrians. So I think it's time coming. The speed bumps, I think they're a good thing. It actually slowed a lot of the vehicular traffic on Pensacola, and that is why not too many citations for speeding have been passed out on Pensacola in regards to the speed bumps.
So, Madam Chair, just a follow-up of that. I think that our Community Action Committee should monitor this as well, and if it's prudent, that we should probably consider maybe doing a resolution or bringing it up as a topic to help the law enforcement and Fire Department. Because one of the things we want to do is make sure that these impediments, that's what I call it, doesn't slow down the response time, because as more and more of the populations coming into the Alamoana Kakaako area, and it's growing, these condos that's going up at four hundred feet, you know, you're talking about seven hundred-plus units, and you multiply that by two, that's the increase in the population. So I think we should monitor that, and when it's time, put something in writing so that we can send it up through the city council to assist the HPD and Fire Department.
Thank you, Treasurer Mariano, for that suggestion. Any other questions from board members? Community members, both in person and online, questions for Lieutenant Seguso, HPD? Okay, Lieutenant, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. You guys have a great night.
It is now 6:18. We are moving on to Board Business, filling of Board vacancies. We have two vacancies at this time for Sub-District One and Sub-District Three. Do we have any nominations or any individual who would like to join us on our board? Okay, we are moving this on to our next agenda for October. We do want you to consider being a member of the Neighborhood Board and being part of the Neighborhood Board system. Three point one, approval of the August 27, 2024 meeting minutes for members. Any edits, comments, questions, concerns?
I moved to approve.
Okay, moved by both Member Eisen or Chi, seconded by Member Davis. Meeting minutes are approved. Moving on to other part from the September 12 Action Committee meeting with Committee Chair Emma Davis.
Thank you. Um, you know, I think I want to try and make this as brief as possible in terms of a review of just the Action Committee, because I know that there's a lot more conversation to be had. But I do want to, you know, thank the group of pickleball players that went out and collected data over fifteen days. You know, I think that's helpful to see a picture of what's happening. I also want to thank the tennis players for, again, getting together and bringing your voices to the table as well. You know, I don't think we intend to favor any one side. You know, it's just who brings it to the board, and then we open conversation, and we're very much in the midst of that conversation. Um, you know, and I want to thank Director Thielen as well for coming to that meeting and helping to, you know, share perspective from the Parks Department and what's possible and what's being done. Again, part of the conversation of understanding the broader picture. Um, you know, I think she also brought up a really good point in that neither she nor we are the final decision-makers of this. Um, you know, our goal in what I view the Action Committee to be is a place to extend conversation beyond this meeting and what we have time for, to make sure that the community is being heard. And that's the intention of it, to be a conversation and to invite, you know, Director Thielen to that, until we can find a solution. And if not, then it is the responsibility of the board to give our suggestion on the best path forward in the form of resolution. But at the end of the day, even when we vote on a resolution, it's a suggestion for the people that, you know, are further up the chain, the elected officials, thank you, um, you know, to decide on if that's going to be implemented or not. Um, you know, so when it comes to this, you know, I've tried to do a lot of conversation, you know, and again, with the pickleball players and with tennis players as well. Um, you know, I've had the fortune of coaching high school tennis in this state for four years, so it's not something I'm unfamiliar with, and have been a lifelong tennis player as well before my family got into pickleball, and they're both sports that I continue to enjoy, and I'm trying to come from that perspective, even to the point where I am trying to consider it residents playing pickleball and residents playing tennis. You know, I know that there's a lot of passion and protection around the sports that you enjoy, and I understand that. Um, you know, I also think it's our responsibility to find shared solutions. Um, and again, we're continuing to try and collect input before we come to a decision on that. Um, let me think if there's- I took notes because I wanted to, I wanted to make sure to cover it, and the last thing I'll say is, you know, wow, the community participation today. This is the most people that I've seen show up for a Neighborhood Board meeting in the year that I've sat on the board, which tells me that we're talking about the right thing. Um, you know, and again, the conversation is to be continued, and we want to hear, you know, more until we do that. The last thing I'll say is that the Action Committee, again, has a lot of things, you know, that continue to be brought up where we need further conversation. Um, I am trying to collect what we hear today and put together a draft resolution, and when I say draft, meaning not a final iteration, not being put up for a vote by the board immediately, but something for both the board and the community to consider, to bring to their thoughts to a separate meeting where you will be invited, or I'll make sure to advertise that where we can further have this conversation. Um, because as you can see, the agenda is long for the monthly board meetings, and it is our job to stick to that and protect the time that Kathleen has created for other, you know, high priority things in our neighborhood. So please continue to be involved on this matter and others. Um, you know, I think it makes us do our job better, to make sure that, you know, we're hearing the voices of the people that we represent. Um, that said, we also talked about dog parks, which probably does not have a simple solution either, but if you have any opinions on that, we're still continuing to try and better understand how residents feel about the current rules and regulations about dogs in parks as well. So with that, that's our recap, and I'll hand it back over to Chair Lee.
Thank you, Action Committee Chair Emma Davis, and again, thank you, everyone, for being here today. While we are not going to be considering any resolutions, we do appreciate your presence. So we have received your testimony as well. Camilia has sent the link for anyone who would like to see whether or not their testimony has been received. You will be able to have the opportunity to talk about your concerns and whatever you're passionate about and the community concerns portion of our meeting. So each speaker will get three minutes. So just letting you guys know, and again, thank you for being here this evening.
Good. I'm sorry. Last thing. Um, you know, because I know these conversations are going to move forward, and I know that they come with tension. And I just, you know, myself included, want to remind everyone, you know, think about the community that we want to live in and how we speak to each other. Um, you know, again, there's passion in a lot of the testimony, but there's also some things that I think if they come up, you know, spoken, are not the way that we would potentially want to be, you know, treating each other as neighbors. And the second piece. Forgot the other point, but when it comes to resident concerns, I'll try and share it. It's important. Again, shared solution, you know, it's about representing the residents, not one group over the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Action Committee Chair Emma Davis, for that update. Moving on to item three point four, consideration of good government reforms resolution. This was sent to the board last week, and it was my oversight. I apologize. Resolutions are supposed to be up forty-eight hours, not twenty-four, as I had thought. So we can talk about this particular resolution, but we'll be able to vote on it in our October meeting. That being said, does anyone on the board have any comments on that resolution? Camilia, could you pull it up? Okay, so while Ms. Camila Gomez is pulling it up, Secretary Rice, and then, oh, sorry, Vice Chair Rice and then Secretary Davis.
Thank you. Has this, I'm sorry for my lack of knowledge, but has this resolution been discussed at the Action Committee? Not yet. Okay, so well, that's next issue. Thank you. That's all I needed to know.
Thank you. Secretary Davis?
Um, I know in future action committees, and I'll be drafting that agenda soon, you know, Member Mariano and I have talked about, again, just the input or the requirements about input and community input before action or decisions are to be made. Because again, it's one thing that I think we can do a better job at, is making sure that we're getting input before making decisions. And I think that that's the goal of this, and I think there's maybe a couple of things that, you know, Lynn and I have talked about in, and again, minimums for community input before, you know, things can be built or permits can be created. You know, I know things are shared publicly, and they ask you to come to public hearings, which you're doing today because you're passionate about something. But a lot of things, you know, they're not the things that affect or are going to be the first thing that we're going to care about, but they also impact us long-term and the community. And I don't see a huge amount of that being done from any department in terms of collecting data from the community, and I think that that's what this resolution is really trying to get at.
Thank you, Secretary Davis. Member Mariano?
Yes, just the, on this resolution, when we proceed forward, we should probably take a look at it because it's the two segments. One relates to state government, and the other is where we fall under, which is city council. Right? So there's some things that we can influence at the city level. That's what this board is about. But at the same time, we're fortunate that we have state representative and even a governor's representative here. So we need to ensure that when we put this resolution forward, we should differentiate that to make it clear what's the city's responsibility and what's the state. So then, when they get together, the mayor and the governor get together, they can come up with a common ground so that it's benefit for all, not just Alamoana Kakaako, because this thing impacts the entire island of Oahu, but also at the state level, the entire county, the whole state of Hawaii.
Thank you, Member Mariano. Any other comments from the board? Comments from the community, both in person and online?
Sorry, Chair Lee. May I offer a comment? I'm not sure if the raise hand function is operating right now.
First, Vice Chair Chi.
Awesome, thank you. Just going the comments that everyone else made. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to talk about this during our Action Committee meeting and to vote on it at the next board meeting. Honestly, this is a pretty straightforward, common sense type of good government reform resolution. And I feel like, yeah, this is something that our board, our board members especially, have a lot of experience understanding how these function. And I think this will be really helpful for us to pass in encouraging our elected officials that, and letting them know that, you know, these are things that the community does want, and it's important at the end of the day for all of us, because these decisions do influence a lot of things that impact our day-to-day lives.
Thank you, First Vice Chair Chi. Any other comments? Ms. Kim Kokoyomoto, online.
Um, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak in support of this resolution. I know you're going to have a deeper discussion later, but I just wanted to share with you that this did, was sent to me as well. And I know this is an effort that the community is working on in different, with different kinds of details and different measures. But generally speaking, from what I read, this specifically deals with being able to get some of the reforms in the lawmaking process that would, that I think it's centered on, many of you know of the fully commission to improve the standards of conduct that was created in response to the corruption, the legislators who were arrested and who served time for taking bribes. But to address the climate that that made them feel empowered to make those judgments and to make those decisions. So I think a lot of these items specifically go to de-centering power and decision-making, and obviously, you know, when you're talking about pay-to-play politics, it's about de-centering it from a few individuals, and, you know, and for the House, it'd be making sure that all fifty-one legislators have an opportunity, an equal opportunity to weigh in on decision-making so that individual chairs don't have the opportunity to kill. Um, so that individual chairs don't have the opportunity to kill, uh, to kill a bill. Um, or to, um, you know, to make sure bills, certain bills aren't heard. Um, again, it's about dismantling that. Um, and then of course, there are some other elements of, um, curbing, um, contributions made by executives, by board members. Um, I don't know if many of you are aware that the, um, legislature has a grant in aid program and they give sometimes up to one point five million dollars to, um, nonprofits as well as some for-profit companies. And in turn, these companies and these nonprofit, um, organizations will give the legislators really, um, the maximum contributions. So it becomes this weird kind of money laundering thing, getting public funds and giving it as a grant to an entity. And then they hire lobbyists and people who then in turn give money to the lawmakers who voted to give money to that organization or to that company. So it's about getting rid of some of all those layers, um, that, that's there. Um, and also just to share with you as the next representative, um, for this, um, parts of this district. Um, that I, you know, um, a member Davis mentioned that these resolutions you pass, um, are just suggestions. Um, and I want to share with you, having, having had been a neighborhood board member, I understand the deliberation everyone goes through. I understand the community input that's involved. And I actually plan to, um, you know, really strongly consider the positions of this neighborhood board, as well as the other neighborhood boards that are in my, um, that are in our district. Um, and so that's really important. So when, if you guys were to pass this resolution, for instance, it'll give me the responsibility, because I think if you read it really carefully, it's actually asking me to move forward and who to vote for leadership, for instance. Like who I could, whom I, as your representative, going to support to be the next Speaker of the House, right? This document will, uh, put a kind of responsibility on me to make sure I inquire, um, to the next, um, to the next speaker who's asking for my vote. So we all individually vote on who the speaker is, who the leadership council is. Um, who, um, who, who are going to be the different chairs of each committee? And, and what the, what the rules are that, um, that we will adopt and amend. Um, so all of this information then, so this will put pressure on me to let the leadership know, like, hey, my district cares about these issues. And, you know, um, they're asking that I consider this when making, when casting my vote for leadership. So.
Ms. Kim Kokoyomoto, thank you. We appreciate you continuing to work with our board. Um, especially with you now being an elected official. So we really appreciate you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any other comments, questions regarding this? Okay. So we will be placing this in our Action Committee agenda. Okay, thank you. Moving on to attendance at other meetings, board members. Member Freenas.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's so lovely to see all of you. We do have a full house. So it's so wonderful and pleasing when you folks do join us and voice your voice your concerns. And on that note, last night I attended the, uh, the Honolulu City Council's, Council's Planning and Economy Special Meeting regarding, uh, the urban center development plan. And, uh, for our neighborhood, the Kakaako area, we are going to see a great impact because of, you know, the rail and everything and the proposals that are being, um, made at those, those levels with development. Now, some of the themes that they covered, I'll try to keep this short, is of course housing affordability, the types and conditions, mobility improvements, which would include the rail, the bus, pedestrians, roadway facilities, and also creating livable, age-friendly communities. And on that note, with the gentrification of all these areas along the rail line, I mean, I'm hoping for our neighborhood that we don't price out our kapunas. They are part of our viable community and we also want them to thrive in the community along with us as well. And of course, keeping in mind always climate change and sea level rise, and also preserving and enhancing parks, open spaces and natural features. One of the things also, as may perhaps a lot of you are here in tonight's attendance, is the, uh, the aspects of amenities that the developers should provide us, i.e. more pickleball spaces, i.e. more tennis courts, or even dog walking friendly parts. So a lot of information was shared last night and, um, Councilman, that's the member say, perhaps later on can speak about this as you give us a report. And I just brought back the really thick packet for anyone who wants to come and peruse this, whether it be through our board or, uh, our neighbors as well. So, yeah, very interesting, always interesting and always in flux whenever there's development in our community and, um, and yeah, as our neighborhood board representative, you know, we try to bridge the gap and present as much information as we can. Thank you.
Member Freenas, thank you for that update and bringing back information for our board and for the community as well. Any other board members who'd like to report their attendance at other meetings?
Yeah, I'm at here, um. I missed the last month's meeting of the MPO. But what I did receive was a survey, which I talked to the MPO about to ensure that we have more public participation. So the next meeting is, uh, next week, Wednesday. I plan on participating on that and report back out. But it's important that this board, as I sent out to the, uh, or the board members, that we take the survey. But we also emphasize that when we have these surveys, that the Neighborhood Commission also puts these words out, uh, for the survey, because that's another means of having public access. Another means of information, that's information sharing. And so as we continue to go on and we participate in all these meetings, the Action Committee and like the Member Freenas, uh, attended, and other committees that we go, that we take this seriously, which we do. And then we ensure that the public, uh, particularly in Alamoana Kakaako, is well informed.
Thank you, Member Mariano. It is now six thirty-nine PM. We are moving on to presentations. DTS Complete Streets Office Updates. Ms. Rene Espial, are you online? Ms. Espial, you are on mute. Ms. Rene Espial. If you can unmute yourself for your DTS presentation. Okay, Ms. Espial, our neighborhood assistant has, uh, sent a request for you to unmute, so you should be able to see that request. Okay, um, we are going to move forward with the agenda for now. And then we'll get back to the DTS presentation. Um, any sub-district reports? First, uh, Second Vice Chair Rice.
Thank you. So I just wanted to share with the community that, um, October third, Thursday, October third at five thirty PM at Kola Walo Park in Ward Village across from Scratch Restaurant and Off the Wall. There will be a meeting held led by Craig Nakamoto, who's the Executive Director of the Hawaii Community Development Authority, or HCDA. And he's going to provide the community with much-needed or demanded updates from the community about the crosswalk at Waimea and Queen Streets. That is, it's over two and a half years now that beacons were promised and island went in a few months ago and those stripes were repainted. But I almost got killed in there the other day and it was the second time. So I'm upset about it personally, but I know lots of others. And when the playground is reopened, and that's another item on the agenda, is when will the playground be opened? Is a lot of the Ward Village moms and a lot of anybody else, moms and dads and children and people with dogs. Everyone's curious as to when the playground will be reopened. And so that will be provided with an update. And then also the Kola Walo Malka Dog Park, which is also almost two and a half years since it was announced. They only started working on it last November. So I don't know. They built condominiums in two years, but they can't build a dog park in two years. They can't build a playground within a reasonable amount of time. And I'm frustrated as a community member. It, these are our taxpayers' dollars that are paying for these things, which is wonderful. And it's wonderful that Speaker Psyche and Sharon, Senator Sharon Moriwaki and Representative Adrian Tam found the funds. But it's HCDAs responsibility to get these projects done. People in the community are not happy that it's taking as long as it is. So come with your questions. Please come and attend and bring your dogs, bring your children, bring your strollers, bring your questions. Because Craig will be there to answer them. I don't think we're going to like some of the answers, quite honestly. But at least we're going to get answers straight from the agency that is responsible for these upgrades. Thank you.
Thank you, Second Vice Chair Rice for that report. Member Chang online.
Uh, thank you very much, Chair Lee. Uh, I just want to report a couple of things. Um, I've had a couple of notices from a lot of the residents in the area where I am, just such as you want. The streetlights on Rycroft Street are out. Uh, Ohana Street is out. And on Leona Street, right by the corner of Leona and Kahaka is out. Uh, we did try to use the three-one-one app to report it. Um, we had heard from one of the community members that the development at the park by Non-Ink may have clipped one of the lines. And Hawaiian Electric, I, I'm not sure if it's them, but some, we just want to make sure that, um, the city knew that the lights were out. And, um, you know, it's, it's a, that particular area has a lot of homeless. And it would be nice if we had the streetlights back on as soon as possible. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Member Chang. Uh, Second Vice Chair Rice.
Member Chang, is your tree stump still there? Have they removed your tree stump? He's muted. Okay. Well, anyway, just thought we'd ask. Every month, the same question comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Second Vice Chair Rice. If we can go back to Agenda Item 4.1, the DTS Complete Streets Office Updates with Ms. Rene Espial.
I promise I know how to use WebEx. I'm completely blaming my computer. Um, Margaret, Chair Lee, for having me, uh, and members of the board. Uh, my name's Rene Espial. I'm the Complete Streets Administrator for City and County of Honolulu. Um, and I'm happy to be here today to provide an update on a number of initiatives that we have going on in your district and look forward to your questions and comments. And of course, my lovely computer likes to pray. There we go. Okay. Um, so I think many of you are familiar with the concept of complete street. Um, it is a city and county law. It was passed in twenty twelve and the law basically states that um, every time the city touches a city street, um, it has to be cognizant of everyone who is using those streets, not just motorists, um, and is supposed to incorporate complete street features into that project. Um, the most common project we typically do, um, on city streets is repaving. Um, so that's always a good opportunity for us, um, to make changes and to put streets back in a, in a safer way, um, for everyone, including pedestrians, bicyclists, people who ride transit, um, as well as drivers. Um, we are truly committed to complete streets of the city. Um, this is not sort of a token, um, program, um, with small projects. It's really something that has been incorporated, uh, into the way that we operate in the city. Uh, these are the five city departments that we primarily, um, work with, um, in order to make safety changes to our street. Um, you know, planning and permitting obviously oversees the development side, a little less so in Kakaako with HCDA. Um, but still they oversee, uh, the impact to street, uh, based on new development. Um, DTS, where administratively housed, um, runs transit, uh, traffic signals, traffic operations and parking. Um, and then Department of Design Construction typically does the larger projects. Um, the DTS may do initial planning, you know, with a lot of community engagement. And then we will often pass those projects on to DBC uh, to do the final design and oversee construction of larger projects. Uh, DFM, Facility Maintenance, um, technically owns all of our streets. Um, and they obviously have in-house crews to do, um, pavement repair, striping, signage improvement. Uh, they also oversee stormwater quality. Um, and then of course Parks Department does have our Urban Forestry uh, Division, which is a critical part of Complete Streets as well. Um, okay, so jumping into the project updates, uh, this is, uh, Rehabus Street Phase Twelve E is still ongoing. I'm sure you guys have uh, been sort of watching the progress of paving, um, on Awahie and Cook, Kama Kae, um, for the last year or so. Um, we are, we, you know, you can see a lot of visible changes out there, but the project is still not done. Um, you may have seen there are some places where we're actually redoing the pavement, um, because the pavement did not meet um, our specifications and those are being redone by the contractor, um, at no cost to the city. Um, there is also a sinkhole still that needs repair on Cook Street. Um, and we also have some final striping and signage changes to do. I know there was conversation earlier. I think about Awahie Street and the bicycle lanes there. I apologize, it's, it's, I don't know if we're fully ready for enforcement quite yet, because sometimes the sign and the striping on the street don't quite match. Um, so I think it's a good time maybe to start educating motorists. And then once they get the project done, um, and the signs and everything, um, are coherent out there, maybe we can start, um, more aggressive enforcement. Um, there are new bicycle facilities as part of this project on Cook, Awahie, Pohukaina and Kama Kae. Um, I, you know, we know there was an issue on Kama Kae. I've got this picture here on the bottom. Um, where, when we changed the configuration of the road, cars were then sort of, uh, waiting behind parked cars, thinking that they were sitting in a traffic queue. Um, we've since gone out there, our facility maintenance crews, and improved the striping, uh, put up some delineators. And, and we think everything's working pretty well out there. Um, so we should be finished by the end of the year, um, with all of the details of that project. Um, and, uh, hope that, uh, the community, um, keeps using the new facilities. I know we personally work on Cook Street and I've seen a lot of people using the bike lanes there, um, already in this short period of time. Um, another, uh, big issue in Kakaako obviously is the transfer of street, um, from the state to city and county. Um, this happened, I believe in January of this year, um, uh, executive order by the governor. Um, these streets are, as you all know, um, in pretty poor condition. Uh, they have not been uh, maintained, improved for many, many, many decades. Um, and they are now, um, the city's, uh, responsibility. Um, so fortunately, state, we're working with the Department of Transportation. They are working to provide funds to us. Um, so that we can start some new federal aid projects and pull in federal money, um, to do sort of, you know, planning with the community and the property owners um, on how to improve those streets. I know sidewalks, um, and drainage, um, are probably very near the list of, uh, top improvements needed. But we will have a full community process, uh, to inform those plans. Uh, in the meantime, HDOT was able to pave Queen Street for us. And they are doing some striping improvements on Queen Street because we did not want to wait years and years, um, to at least get some dedicated space where we could out there. So we are going to have new bike lanes, um, on, um, Queen Street between Cook and Ward. And then it's much narrower, um, on the Diamond Head side of Ward. So we were able to sort of squeeze out a four-foot, uh, shoulder. So we were able to sort of squeeze out a four-foot shoulder on the Makai side, at least for people walking. So they don't have to walk in the travel lane as they're doing today. We've come to the board, you know, several times over the last years for, for Pensacola Street and our complete street plans there. Those are sort of longer term plans, but we were able recently to do sort of some quick build improvements, which is striping. This was last week in front of the Discount Appliance Store between Hopaka and Kona Street. As you guys may remember, cars here were parked sort of diagonally, as you can see in the bottom picture, even though this is city right-of-way, it was sort of treated as private parking. We were able to work with the property owner and kind of come up with a compromise here where we turned the parking to be parallel. And we now have a new dedicated walking space adjacent to that building instead of people having to walk and push baby strollers and everything right in the road. Longer term build out of that, I'm sorry, this is the plan showing the, the short-term improvements with the parking changes here on this block. And then where you see this kind of grass pattern, we put in delineators. This is Chenlock Cam here on the corner. So people won't park there and we can keep it open for pedestrian passage. The city, of course, also has a long-term box culvert drainage project under here. Some of you may have remember when the road collapsed years ago. And so there is a redesign of the entire road. And at that point, we'll be able to put in higher quality sidewalks, extend the bike lane and other things in the Pensacola Complete Streets Plan. Coming back to some of our planning that we do in the department, we've recently completed our pedestrian plan a couple of years ago. And then our first ever Vision Zero Plan this year, where we really take a data-driven look at like where crashes are happening, particularly for our most vulnerable, you know, pedestrians and bicyclists. And, you know, people not protected by a ton of steel. And so we've, you know, identified maps like you see on the right here. These are our high pedestrian injury locations. We are proud to announce that we did get a competitive federal grant to start planning for some complete street changes to these corridors. They're pretty important major corridors. So we are going to have a lot of conversations with the public coming up on these. And we'll certainly invite you guys when the time comes, but just wanted to give you a heads up on what's kind of coming down the pike. And these are the green streets here that will be in that study. They are the same. So what you see on the right is the high injury corridors and intersections. What you see on the left are the tier one, the top ones for which we don't have a complete street plan. So that's what we've been looking at next. And we have a fair amount of scope for public outreach within that project. I mentioned our Vision Zero Action Plan. This was released this summer just recently. It is sort of a, a new lens for us to look at road safety and complete streets. And it basically says that, you know, we can't just say it's on drivers. We can't just change the design of our streets. We have to do sort of everything across the full spectrum to make sure that we're no longer sensibly losing human life on our streets. People just trying to get around to their daily destination. So I encourage folks who are interested to take a closer look at that. You know, we have some pilot projects that are coming out of that. The picture in the middle is flashing or solar-powered rectangular reflected flashing beacon that we're starting to pilot at some of our high, I use crosswalks that don't have the traffic signal or stop sign. And then of course you guys have seen, you know, the raised crosswalks near McKinley. So trying to find these sort of quick ways to, to reduce speeding and reduce fatalities. We did do some data collection actually on these raised crosswalks adjacent to McKinley High School. And the numbers are quite staggering, you know, just these simple humps. More than doubled the number of cars that actually stopped for people trying to cross our streets. So kind of exciting stuff as part of Vision Zero, we're trying to do things quickly, experiment and use data to see if they actually work. That's, I think most of what I had to share there was, I know some discussion several months ago was part of the genesis for the request to be here about no right turn on red. So I thought I'd provide a little bit of background on that for folks that are interested. I always find it very interesting that, you know, right turns on red was not, at least in the eastern US, was never allowed until the 1973 oil crisis. So it was right, allowing people to turn right on a red signal was not motivated out of, you know, any, I don't know, traffic engineering, I don't know, goals or recognition of safety or anything. It was basically just to use less gas and keep cars moving and not have them stop and idling, which of course is a very different reality than today where many people have hybrids, electric vehicles, et cetera. Of course, no right turn on red is, has safety benefits, of course, because it does separate users, you know, in different time and space. But of course there, it's not appropriate everywhere. So typically they're appropriate where there's a high volume of pedestrians or where it's challenging for turning vehicles to properly see pedestrians without encroaching into the crosswalk. It of course does have some trade-offs. It can lead to traffic backups in certain locations. We actually are not doing a lot of these, probably most of the ones that you're seeing out there today are being done by the state, by the Hawaii Department of Transportation. And we do applaud their efforts to put safety first. So I think that's all I have for you. Oh, Kuhio. Sorry, this isn't in an adjacent neighborhood board, but of course relevant to the neighbors. And we have shared with you guys before, we are piloting bus-only lanes on Kuhio Avenue in Waikiki, similar to what we did several years ago on King Street through downtown. We are going to start with just the westbound only direction. It's got about half as much traffic as eastbound and actually carries a few more buses. And so we are getting pretty close to starting installation of that. It's just pavement markings and signs, pretty easy for us to adjust, you know, if we don't like the way things that are working. But if you are interested in more information, it's online. We have the full plans that are happy to take questions as well. And that space will be reserved for city and private buses, which is different than King Street. We have a lot of motor coach buses helping us move people in Waikiki. They are welcome to use it. And we also allow freight trucks to move in the lane, not to stop and load, apologies, but to move, of course, bicycles. And then if you're making a right turn, you can come into the lane to turn into a driveway or the next street. Okay, that's all I had. Here's our, our web address. We have information pretty much on all our projects islandwide there. And I will stop sharing until I can see everything.
Ms. SBL, thank you. I'll start with the board. Any questions, comments from the board members? Member Mariano, Member Farinas?
Yes, thank you for that presentation. I would like to, Madam Chair, to be kind of blunt. Okay? Since I've been on this board, we've talked about infrastructure. We talked about continuity of government. We talked about public hearing. And yet this organization, the Complete Streets, has done less than half of that. Doing a presentation in front of the neighborhood board doesn't necessitate the requirement to say you have a public hearing. We talked about Pensacola as an example, the narrowing of Pensacola, putting in the parked cars, adding additional bike lanes. There was no public hearing. When we, when they presented it to the board, we said at that time, the bike lane where they're putting it is on the left side, the other side of Pensacola. We said it would make sense to put it on the other side. There was no public hearing. They presented it to the neighborhood board. Next thing you know is they put it on the other side. And what did that do? Create more traffic. I'm, I'm sorry, the Diamond Head side, on the Diamond Head side. And it created not only more traffic, but more impediments along the way. So I'm just really concerned. I mean, the presentation looks pretty nice. The traffic studies that you've done to get the data to make these decisions, I'm not sure when this data was done. And was it done during COVID when the traffic was really low? And you still use those same data as, as a means to complete streets? Because if you look at it now, you need to update that traffic study because the increase in traffic, increase in pedestrians has exponentially grown in the Alamonakaka area. And you look at the neighboring communities, it's the same. So I'm kind of concerned about that. So I would say that, you know, if we're looking at getting some validity from this, I as one of the board members that represent District Two are not happy with that. The quality of control when they're doing these complete streets, particularly when they're doing it, the striping is not consistent. Look at Cook Street. Cook Street was presented a while back. Next thing overnight, we got this construction going on. We're not sure if it's part of a condominium now, but now we know it's a complete street. They added a bike lane. It impeded businesses along Cook Street because there's no parking. Now it went from a three to four lanes down to two lanes. The common sense of this complete street doesn't make common sense. And I, I think we should have that addressed to take a look at that before they go even further. You know, I think that complete streets should do two things. Priority one, fix the potholes. Fix the potholes. That's the problem. Second, when you look at complete streets and you look at the traffic signs, not only in the Alamonakaka area, all over the state, all over this, all over this island of Oahu. The signs are not readable. You know, you could take a power wash and clean off those, those old signs so you can see those signs. But it's not, I don't think it's being done. I think the money is not really well spent that way. And I think we should have something to present back to the city. And then have the city go up with the mayor, you know, to ask the state and find out what is really going on. Because it appears that the quality control is not being done accordingly. And then the last thing is the no right turn on red. Yeah, I understand it was in the mainland, but this is Hawaii. The difference between the mainland and Hawaii and the, and the island of Oahu is the population and the lack of space. Like even the freeways, for example, you know, you should extend the entrance and exit of the freeways. That would make more sense. At the end of you, when you exit off the freeway, particularly Punho, the traffic light that's there, I think Complete Streets should take a look at that. The traffic backup all the time when you're coming in from the other side going towards Diamond Head, when you get to Punch Bowl, I mean, uh, the Punho exit, it's backed up. And once you pass that, it's open. And why is that? Because the traffic light at the top of the Punho exit, no right turn. The traffic light sequence is bad and you make that right turn, you make that left turn, there's another traffic light. And that has some stop during the peak period is during the school, uh, school timeframe with people, parents picking up their, their kids. That creates a lot of the backup. So I think that Complete Streets should take a look at really what Complete Street is and look at those traffic congestions and find modification for that rather than trying to fix things that's not broken and making it look nice. But yet later on down the road, it becomes an impediment for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Mariano. Ms. SBL, would you like to respond to that before we move on to our other board members and community members' questions and concerns?
Um, I, I guess I'll comment on the public hearings and the traffic studies. So we did public hearings many, many years ago on Pensacola. I think the big challenge is that we don't move as fast as people expect us to. And so, you know, we had multiple workshops. We worked with the previous board chair on the configuration of Pensacola. But this is years ago, you know, that's just the timeline that it takes for us to budget for planning, do procurement for planning, budget for design, do another procurement process, which takes a year for design contract. And then we have to budget for construction and do another procurement. So it adds, you know, years and years. So, you know, I apologize if there are lapses. We take great pride actually in our community outreach. We always go above and beyond. We don't just hold public hearings, you know, we walk the neighborhood. We talk to every business on a street where we're doing work. We have a newsletter that you can sign up for on our website that provides not frequent, but really wonderful updates about stuff across the island. So we put a lot of effort with our very minimal resources into outreach. So if you have ways that we can do it better, we welcome those comments. But please know that we value the community's opinion. And we know that you guys are the experts that live there and we want to meet your needs. And we truly in earnest try to do that. That's the main thing I think I wanted to convey. And we of course don't use traffic studies from during COVID. We are professionals and I have some very, very smart data people that work on my team, fortunately. So lots of other comments there and fixing potholes, I agree. No one likes potholes, people walking, people biking, people driving. And so we're really happy that we were able to get out there and do Queen Street. That actually was the impetus for it. And, but as part of that, we were able to make it better for everyone too, I hope. So thank you for your passion and your comments. I don't think I can address everything.
Thank you, Member Farinas, and then Secretary Davis and then Second Vice Chair Rice.
First of all, thank you, Ms. SBL, for being here. Please make no mistake that we do value your input. But it's also very important for us as a neighborhood board members that we also resonate concerns and the needs of the actual neighbors and in real time. Member Mariano encapsulated a lot of the feelings and ideas that we share. So just to add on, on that very quickly, the no turn on red. You know, thank you for sharing the historical facts behind that. But in real time, the main grievance from our neighbors was these signs appeared overnight. They literally appeared overnight. Now, in terms of you said suggestions of how do we get the word out there? You know, how about a PSA, a public service announcement? You don't need a budget for that, you know, for those of us who do reside in condos. We have a thing called condo control where you can meet with the, the management, the general managers of each individual condos and ask them to post these informations, you know, letting the residents know that, hey, in about two weeks' time, we're going to be putting up these signs. That's going to say for all these years, we were allowed to make a right turn now on red, but now that's going to change. So give us the fair warning, the fair lead time. And yes, there are ways to contact us and to disseminate information. And one other thing that I would like to add on the signage, it's not only whether it's legible, readable, clean, the signage placements, a lot of time when you've already stopped at the stop, you've already either passed a sign or the sign is beyond the crosswalk. So you clearly have not had the opportunity to see the sign. And on top of that, if you weren't aware that there is a sign to be looking for, you missed it altogether. So please, you know, if we may, myself and as a board members, bend your ear. Here are concerns and yes, it's, it's all fine and great that you have these extensive studies. But again, in real time and the real concerns of the neighbors that live, reside, work and attempt to thrive here. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Farinas. Secretary Davis?
Yeah, um, just a really quick comment on the right turn on red. I know, again, it came up a lot for us, so I think we've all, we've had a chance to talk about it. But the big thing I see, and I appreciate-
It's not, can I just say, it's not ours. It's from the state. You know that, right?
Okay. Yep.
Okay, okay.
I was just, I was just about to say, I appreciate you sharing that some of those are being put in by the state because I don't think we were necessarily aware of that. But I think just the overall message, especially because it's some are by the city and some by the state, consistency is really important. And I think anytime like one street is, one street isn't, you're going to have an accountability issue in maintaining people actually doing that. And again, I know it's not necessarily yours, but even when the city's putting them in, having one street that is, the next street's not right turn on red, the next one is, everyone's just going to start doing it, you know, I don't want to say that, I'll, I'll abide by it. But it does make it a lot harder to know which one's which, especially because people, myself included, aren't always paying close enough attention, the attention that we should be, especially considering pedestrians and motorists are out on the roads too. And the last thing I want to say, because I just keep hearing it. You know, in my time on the board, I think one of the things I've really noticed is, you know, our government has become very top-down. Decisions are made, they inform us, and then we're upset about things a lot of the time. And you know, there's two pieces to that. One, you know, we want to help with that too. It's come up a lot at the Action Committee about how do we better inform the public and get community involvement and, and do that on a neighborhood level so we can help with the information gathering, because not all things are scalable. You can't, you know, survey the entire island necessarily effectively. And the second piece is, you know, it really depends on the community members too. I know it's hard to keep up with it. I'm trying as hard as I can to keep up with it on the board. And I didn't even know that the, the no turn on red signs were going to pop up. But you know, as much as you guys can, again, keep, please keep being involved. The opinions are what we get that we can then share with departments and with, you know. And it's kind of a, again, a collective success oriented thing where, you know, everyone needs to be a part of making decisions for our community. So that's, you know, just kind of something I want to share and encourage people to continue, you know, providing us with input.
Thank you. Second Vice Chair Rice.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I have a couple of comments and questions. One is- One is your city and then their state. Don't the two of you collaborate and meet and discuss these things? So Alamoana Boulevard is state, but Cook Street is city. So there are all these no right turn on red signs, starting from Ward Avenue down to South Street. And in your presentation that you shared with us today, it says high pedestrian areas. From Ward on Alamoana Boulevard to South Street, you rarely see a pedestrian. I drive that back and forth all day long for my business. And I just sit at red lights and sit at red lights and there's no pedestrian, rarely. And it was never a problem before, but all of a sudden it's a problem, whether it's heading to Makai on Coral, Paula, Kiave Street, it doesn't matter. If you come down Cook Street and want to turn right on Alamoana, you're sitting there forever, waiting for a minute and a half light to turn green. There's no pedestrians there. Somebody needs to take accountability and put the two agencies together and go down there and put monitors down there and see what's really going on. Just putting up a sign because someone thinks, oh, this is a high pedestrian area. Did anyone really go down there and look? My business is down there. There are no pedestrians. I can tell you that. There are no pedestrians. The other thing is that if there were public hearings about any of these initiatives, I don't think any of us on the neighborhood board was aware of that. So you guys need to do a better job of communicating to the public. And that, as, as Member Farina said, that's a PSA, that's a media alert that goes out to the news media, TV stations, print, radio, get the word out. There's also these, this thing called Facebook and Instagram and TikTok. Everybody pays attention. It depends on your generation, who you are. But you're incumbent by the taxpayers to communicate and not surprise. And that's what bothers me. The project on Kohio Avenue, I think is going to be a complete disaster. You have Kohio Avenue, four lanes. Has anyone looked going from the King Kalakaua statue to, let's say, Royal Hawaiian Avenue where buses and cars and vans are going, limousines are going to turn right on Royal Hawaiian Avenue to the trolley stop in front of DFS? If you're going to limit the right lane, the Makai lane, to only buses and trucks and vans, you're going to create such a traffic jam that no one's going to be able to get into Waikiki from the King Kalakaua statue. Everyone's going to come to a complete stop. How is that going to solve anything? And maybe you did studies, but you said the studies were a long time ago. Well, that was a long time ago. You need to come back and take another peek and take another look. And you know what? It doesn't, it's not rocket science. Just go down there and stand there for an hour and see what's going on. And you'll see what I'm saying is accurate. So thank you for listening to me, but I think the direction that you're going in with the complete streets, build the darn potholes. Kapilani Boulevard, when Movi Haneman ran for mayor, his whole campaign was potholes. And then he got Kapilani Boulevard repaved. Well, you know what? That was over 20 years ago. It needs to be repaved again because you can't ride on it without getting a flat tire. That's what people are angry about. They don't care about right turns on red. They don't care about Kohio Avenue having one lane on each side taken away. Oh, they do care, but the way you're going forward with this is ridiculous. You're going to create such traffic jams in Waikiki, and I know this is our district, but my business goes back and forth between Kakaako and Waikiki. It's a nightmare today. Imagine what it's going to be like when you take two lanes away from Kohio Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Second vice chair Rice. Secretary Davis and then Member Mariano.
Yeah.
Um, just really quickly. Can I clarify on Kohio, just so there's not misinformation? We're only doing the westbound direction first. So the challenging intersection, you were talking about the right turn. I think on the Royal Hawaiian, we're aware that that is a very heavy section and we're not starting there. I just wanted to reassure folks that that wasn't going to happen soon.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, sorry, really quick question, Renee. Do you publicize all the data or the studies that you do on your website?
Yep, all of our traffic studies, all of the community meetings, the videos, the presentations, everything pretty much gets documented on our website. We did just transition to a new website, so some of the quite older stuff might not be there. But if you request it from us, we can certainly help provide that if there's something that you cannot find.
Okay, thank you. And then just follow up question. Do you do studies following the implementation of complete streets projects? Just to make sure that they're actually addressing kind of the gap analysis?
Yeah, yeah, it's something that we're not.
They're publicized as well.
Yeah, I mean, as I sort of shared, you know, the data from the raised crosswalk, we're starting to do more and more of the post safety evaluation. We traditionally, you know, made sure that the traffic is flowing okay, acceptably. But we're really trying to be more data driven, particularly in the post evaluation, to make sure that what we're doing is actually trying to achieve the goals that we intend.
Thank you, Member Mariano.
But, but we can always, we can always be better.
So we have a, we have the representative from the mayor's office and the governor's office here, but so we'll address that later. But just to pick up on what Member Rice, Member Rice was saying. Okay, it's Kohio Street. Study was done a while back. They did.
Studies for Kohio was just done. I'm sorry, the studies for Pensacola were done a while ago before the bike lane went in. But Kohio.
I'm not talking about the bike lane, ma'am.
I know you're talking about Kohio Avenue and that study was not that long ago. It's just over the last year or two. So, and we did one and then we've redone it several times. So I, sorry, I just don't want misinformation to be floating out about any other project.
Okay, so I stand corrected, but still, you know, like for example, down in Chinatown. Okay, so they have, they have one bus lane, makes sense down in Chinatown. But on Kohio and Waikiki, if you put that bus lane in there, when they closed Waikiki for open area, parks, parades, and your name it, the only entrance and exit is on Kohio. And if you have, you take away that lane, now you have not only a traffic, but you have a emergency response. I like the word impediment because I just learned it a couple of days ago. But it becomes a really big impediment and now it becomes a life safety aspect, particularly in Waikiki. You know, look at what happened at Marco Polo, a sad tragedy. You know, and that shut that down. Now just think with all the hotels there in Waikiki, that's going to be, you know, another tragic thing to happen. So I would suggest to take a look at that again. And lastly, Madam Chair, I think when we get an opportunity, we can talk to the mayor's representative and also the governor's representative, particularly on this, this issue here, because this public hearing thing, if they're just coming to the, or neighborhood boards, it's not getting the word out. Now, if they're going to all the neighborhood boards and they're not vocal, some of them are not as vocal as we are, does that mean that of 10 of the, 10 of the 20 neighborhood boards say nothing, that means it's okay? And to me, the answer is no, because we represent more than just, or district. We represent, right, just the minimum, right? Right, just like, lastly, on, I love bicycle lanes. I love bicycles. When I used to ride a lot of bicycles, so that's really good and safe. But bicycle lanes, if you look at it now, if you do your study, a lot of the bicycle lanes are not used by bicyclists. And most of the time, it's not used at all. The one, the bicycle lanes that really used is on Kalani on the Ole Highway. You know, the avid bike riders. So when you have a public hearing and you have 200 bicyclists come up to the public hearing and they all vote in favor of the bicycle lane and not a lot of other public that goes and vote, that shows like, okay, well, the public likes bicycle lane, so we're going to put one there. So I would suggest that we re-take a look at some of these studies that was done in the past and pick the common sense approach and listen to the public. Our neighborhood boards were really concerned with the public safety and the public, and we want that to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Mariano. Ms. Espia, we did receive an email as well from Sub District Three regarding the timing, extending the timing of the left turn traffic signal for vehicles traveling Diamond Head and Alamoana Boulevard and making the left turn onto Atkinson Drive. Would that be through complete streets, so your department or?
That's state. So Alamoana Boulevard is state jurisdiction. Right? You said Alamoana and Atkinson.
Yes. Thank you. And then one more question. You, part of your presentation talked about Kohio Avenue. Did you mention that the bus lane and the bike lane will be one lane? Just wanted to.
There's no bike lane.
It sounds kind of dangerous.
Yeah. There's no bike lane, but bikes are allowed to use the bus lane, just like Hotel Street. It's not the best place to bike, but honestly, there's no good place to bike in Waikiki. So we, you know, hope it'll be better than what's out there today, but it's, you know, we're not promoting it as a high quality bike facility, but bikes are allowed to use the space. As far as emergency response on the bus lane, we have a completely opposite perspective because we're keeping the lane more open for, you know, high efficiency vehicles, emergency response. So I, and then we also have the ability to not use the bus lane during special events because I do know that that is a concern when we do get to, you know, maybe making some improvements on the eastbound direction. So thank you for those comments. And then I think just my final thing, I know there's a lot of suggestions for outreach. We do a press release with every community meeting, with all our implementation projects. We are on Instagram, so if you are social media savvy, please follow us. And then we also recently attended the condo manager's meeting to share all our projects too. So we're glad that we're finally kind of keyed into that group. I think that's a good way to reach a lot of residents. So thank you. Keep the ideas coming.
Thank you, Ms. Espia. And in the chat, we also have some comments from some of our community members online. Again, we thank you for joining us this evening. We will more than likely reach out to you again, just so we can continue this conversation. But again, we thank you for your presentation and taking our comments and questions this evening.
Of course, happy to come back. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to residents and community concerns. So this is what we were talking about earlier. Thank you again to, oh, yeah, we already. Thank you again to everyone for being here to talk about what you are passionate and concerned about. Again, we did receive testimony that's uploaded online. Anyone who would like to speak on the pickleball and tennis courts matter, you're more than welcome to come up now. But let's start with a pickleball tennis matter first and then we'll move on after that. And sir, for everyone that is coming up, could you please introduce yourself? And if you're affiliated with a particular group or association, let us know as well. And everyone has three minutes to speak.
Great. Okay, thank you for having this meeting tonight. So my name is Harold Gray. I'm a licensed clinical social worker here in Hawaii. I live in Kakaako and I play tennis at the Alamoana Tennis Courts three to four times a week. And I also take part in USTA matches at Alamoana Beach Park. And what I'd say is these courts are very heavily used by tennis players. They're used by children, teens, adults, seniors, morning, noon and night. Many times you have to wait at the benches for 45 minutes in order to play. So, you know, I saw a petition online claiming that, you know, that the courts are not used or that tennis participation is down. And that's, you know, actually the opposite is true. According to the USTA, more people are playing tennis recreationally, 33% more people in the last four years. So, you know, we don't really feel like there's an accurate presentation of what's going on. I saw a video or when Hawaii News Now came down to the courts and it seemed like that was not an accurate representation of what typically happens at the courts. Also, this all feels a little very sneaky, my word, because we found out about this last Tuesday and no one came to the courts and said, hey, you know, some people are floating this idea. We'd like to get your feedback on it. And within a week, we kind of posted a petition and we got over 1,800 signatures of tennis players who vehemently oppose any changes to the configuration of the tennis courts or conversion of tennis courts to pickleball courts. You know, tennis has a venerable history. It's been played recreationally since 1873. And, you know, more, as I said, more people are playing tennis now recreationally than ever before. The most recent US Open, they had a million people in attendance. They never broke the million mark before. And the reason I say this is because many people who watch tennis, they play tennis. Also ESPN secured the rights for the US Open through 2037. So they must feel that there's an opportunity or a pool of people there who are interested in tennis. So, you know, we'd, we'd like the Pickleball Association to lobby the Parks Department and get space and budget and have dedicated pickleball courts in Alamoana Park. It's a very large park. We don't feel that shared solutions involve taking away facilities that we are currently using just to make room for other people who would like to use that, you know, same real estate. The park is big enough for both of us. You know, they use the hitting wall area now and you can have up to four pickleball courts there. And we didn't complain or, or balk or squawk about that when that happened. And, you know, we want to coexist, but again, this feels, you know, it doesn't feel very good about the way this has transpired. And we'd like to be involved in the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being up here today. And just to clarify, speaking on behalf of the board, we're very transparent when it comes to what we present to you in our agenda. So I just wanted to let everyone know. Our board meetings are every fourth Tuesday of the month. Our Action Committee meetings, which we started this year, is every second Thursday of the month up until 2024. And we will determine the need for that in the next year. So I just wanted to clarify that. And this is why we're having this conversation today, just so we can have everyone's input and feedback and see how we can move forward, both with the community and any pertaining department. Go ahead, ma'am. Please introduce yourself and the association that you're with.
Aloha, my name is Elena Paredes and I represent Oahu Pickleball Association. I've been on the board for OPA since 2018. I'm here to clear up the misinformation that has been going viral through a petition that a certain tennis individual created. And in, as a result, it's defamed our organization's reputation. And especially making it public through that KHON September 21st airing of it. False statements like these create unnecessary controversy and conflicts between the tennis and pickleball communities, as evidenced by some of the people that were interviewed on the news clip regarding the Alamoana Tennis Courts. OPA's mission has always been to advocate for the growth of pickleball by being a resource for lessons, leagues, community events, and facilitating the building of pickleball courts legally. We understand that there is a process that needs to be done to make change happen. Whether the process is fast or slow, whether it's for us or against us, we still respect the process. And we strive to present accurate facts as to why the need for pickleball courts on Oahu is urgent and important. For some reason, pickleball enthusiasts in Hawaii have been given negative publicity lately, which could be equated to the misunderstood joyful, hyperactive child. As pickleballers, ask pickleballers why they love the sport. You get a variety of answers, but I bet it would fall into one of these categories. It's fun to play. It's social and gives one a feeling of belonging. It's a great exercise for most people at any age. And it's inclusive, where all skills and ages can play relatively quickly. At the end of the day, it is the joy, my friend Joy right here. It is the joy that the sport brings to us that makes this sport addicting in a positive way. Stats have shown a 223% increase over the last three years nationally. People across the nation are playing it. Hawaii has the third, oh, sorry, 36.5 million people across the nation are playing it. Hawaii has the third highest rate of interest in playing pickleball of all 50 states, only topped by Utah and Arizona. It is time to address the supply and demand discrepancy. We at OPA believe that this can be done while still coexisting with tennis, provided we as an island community with limited land can all work together. We understand that resolutions are in place for more pickleball courts. And this should serve as a reminder that resolutions should be used for the good of the greater community, not for individuals. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Aloha, and thank you for having me. I'm Kevin Castle. I'm actually a Honolulu Tennis League representative, I'm a board member there. I've been such for about 25 years. I've been playing at Alamoana for over 25 years, so I'm an avid player there. And I concur with a lot of things that have been said here tonight. Pickleball and tennis can coexist together. We were just concerned about some of the misrepresentation about Alamoana tennis. The tennis courts are actively utilized. We have a designated system to have people wait. We don't have people sitting around the courts. There are benches and there's a system. There's a 45-minute minimum wait for each of those courts. And that's the system that's in place, that's been in place for over 25 years. The Honolulu Tennis League has about eight active leagues with over 5,000 members. We provide a pathway from varsity sports for high school students all the way through to college sports. So, so people can actually have an access to athletic scholarship resources. So I don't have much to add beyond what has been said, but I did want to bring those facts up. These are not my facts. I'm going to leave it to my next person. But these are the facts that were passed on from the Honolulu, from the USTA. More than 1,600 players signed a petition to save Alamoana tennis. 95,000 people in Hawaii play tennis. Participation in tennis has increased in 2023 by 18%. 40% of players are frequent players. And again, tennis is a varsity sport, offering a pathway to college for many. So we just want to emphasize that. We have acquiesced a lot at Alamoana. We gave up our practice ball courts. They don't exist anymore. There are 12 lit tennis courts in Kehe Lagoon. There's a plethora of courts even in Makiki Park, where they're actually taking over the basketball courts. And they have four pickleball courts there. We're not against pickleball, but we want to make sure that we have representation and fairness in the decisions that are made about tennis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aloha. Thank you for letting me respond. Just so everyone knows, I'm the one who started it all. I was over there playing pickleball one day and I looked across. I was in the line waiting to play. And I looked over and I saw an empty court six. And I'm thinking, I'm waiting all this time to play. Why can't we share that court? That's what initiated all this. So I'm the guy.
Could you say your name for the record?
I want to say, oh, Roy Howard from Alamoana. I do want to say, I have nothing but love for you tennis players. I respect you because I have a tennis racket. I've gone out there and swung it and missed the ball over and over and over again. So I took up pickleball. Oh, my God, it changed my life. I can actually hit the ball. I can play. I can play across generations. I can play competitively. And it's healthy for me. And the biggest thing that's come across with pickleball is the community atmosphere. I've met so many new friends. So I created the PowerPoint. I came here. I was guided to come here to bring, to bring my issue forth. I went through my presentation, gave them my feeling. They rightly asked, bring us some data. I'm not going on feeling anymore. I'm going on data. I went over there 15 days in a row, between seven and nine times a day, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, one to two hours a day, 1,200, over 1,200 data points. I did the, I did the calculations. I'm sorry, the tennis courts are utilized at 61%. Almost always there's at least one, if not two, three vacant tennis courts. We're asking for Kakua from tennis to help us pickleball play is why we sit in this one little area, confined, waiting to play. What do we have? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10? 10 tables here, half and half tennis, half pickleball. You guys have all the tables. We're forced over there by the piano and we have to share it with you. So the petition quickly, the petition that went forth is wrought with falsehoods. I empathize with you tennis players that signed that petition under false pretense. Almost every statement in there is false. I have data. And it's, in fact, the board has my data. It's open to anyone. So all we are asking for is aloha in the aloha state, Kakua from the tennis court people, and let us borrow a few courts until a permanent facility can be built. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roy Howard.
I don't know where to start. I just want to say that pickleball and tennis game.
Sir, if we can get your name, yes. And if you're affiliated with a particular group or organization.
Teva. My name is Teva. I'm just here to say that pickleball and tennis game cannot coexist together. For what reason? Right now, they're doing fine because where they are, there's a huge, long, and high fence that's about 16 foot, feet high. Now, they want to ask for two courts. Just imagine, pickleball is on fire. How do they play? In the width of the court. How do I play my tennis? In the length of the court. What is between each court? Tennis court that you see one every time you walk by? A huge hole and a huge gap in between. Now, on your court, you will have probably three, three nets or four nets. So you can play your pickleball. You have any idea how many balls will it go next door? There's no fence. There's nothing. There's a fence that's about four foot high. Okay. I play tennis this way. You play pickleball that way with this huge hole. Do you have any idea what's going to happen? Ah, we should try it. It's going to be more pickleball going to the tennis court than tennis ball going to the pickleball. We have been there. And who is this Howard? Are you Howard? I hear that you've been observing for 15 days, activity, whatever you saw. What I want to know is, did you have breakfast, lunch, and dinner the whole time for 15 days while you did your observation? I can tell you that I have done what you just did for 20 years. I have been playing there since the 70s. I have been there over 45 years. I know everything that's going on there. I know who comes at 12, who comes at two, who comes at six, because I played all this group for over 20 years. Do you know who plays at 12 sometimes in the year? Probably not. HPU. Sometimes they come there and practice. Today, do you know who plays there at seven until closing? The Vietnamese. Every night for years, they've been coming here at seven or 6:30 until the end. So. That's all I have to say. Aloha. Thank you.
Thank you. Before the next speaker comes on, I do want to emphasize that this is again for us, for all of us here in the room to get feedback. So we're not going to debate. And again, we are planning on having another meeting and hopefully the Department of Parks is actually open to being in attendance as well when we do schedule another meeting.
To that, people address, I'm going to ask that people address their comments towards us, right? You're sharing your opinions with us. I think, again, just for, you know, making sure that we're sharing those statements and not trying to put them on any one person. Please address them towards us.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Aaron Lau. I actually live in this district. I've been using the tennis courts since the early 80s. I've been playing tennis since I was eight years old. I have coached maybe 20, 30 kids in the past four or five years at the USTA. I'm also an avid pickleball player. I know all these people here. I've been, I play pickleball at least five times a week, but I also coach three or four times a week. And we always use Alamoana, especially because I live here. What I would suggest is there are courts, first of all, I don't want any of the tennis courts taken away. Okay, that's, that's my position. I'm very appreciative. I don't want any of the tennis courts removed or taken away. Okay? I am very grateful for the new lines because I was tired of chalking those lines. But there are other places that we can have a court and maybe get public government sponsorships to provide more courts. I know it'll take a long time to make courts at Alamoana, but there's also a park right here by Peacoine. It's a basketball court. The lights are old, but if you just repave some of that area, you can actually have pickleball courts there. The biggest problem, we do have a lot of pickleball courts available to us, but we have none that are lit. That is the biggest problem. Okay? So everybody comes to Alamoana from all the different districts because those are the only courts that are lit in this area. The new courts that are built out in Kehe, they have lights, but there's no copper wire. Right? So maybe we can spend a few $50,000, $60,000 to get copper wire at Kehe and we won't have so much of a problem at Alamoana. That would be a cheaper, faster result because the lights are there, just rewire everything. And I think Kevin Chang from OPA already has some kind of estimate on how much the wiring will be for Kehe. Okay? If we spread out, I know this is only for this district here, but if we're able to spread out the load for the pickleball courts at night, that will be a lot easier for our district here to handle a smaller load. That's the bottom line. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for waiting so long. My name's Rick Desog. I'm a board member of the Honolulu Tennis League. I just have a few points tonight. You know, I'm also the author or the beginner of that petition on change.org. And for those who say it's based on misrepresentations, those are your own words from your own PowerPoint about removing three courts. Those are their own words from their own PowerPoints to remove both courts in the interim basis. So I'm here only, you know, foremost, I'm here to talk about their proposal, their assessment that no one plays tennis. That's Shabbat. Alamoana tennis courts is used every day by hundreds of people. I did the same research for two days over the last few days. And the numbers I came up with were that there were 55 tennis players, 11 pickleball players. That was last week. Last night, there were 48 tennis players and 11 pickleball players. And that was only on the Maoka side. The other side, I didn't even count. I think that the numbers they presented to you are flawed because those 15 days they talk about, the counts were conducted when four out of the 10 courts were out of commission because the lights were out. So if I were to say that's what's representative of the court usage, that period, I'd be laughed out loud, you know? So those are, you know, that, those are my main points. But the other thing I heard that was disturbing in last month's presentation is that if we remove four of the courts, we're going to have investors come in. We're going to have private developers building pickleball courts and underwriting our ventures. Those are their words, not mine. I don't think Alamoana Beach Park needs even more commercialization. You know, people like to save Alamoana Beach Park. We fought that battle years ago. And we all know how that turned out. I don't think, you know, I don't think it's a good idea to let private equity investors and hedge fund managers telling us how we can use the courts, when we can use it, and how much we're going to have to pay for it. How, how am I doing on time? Okay, last point. You know, what I heard was also disturbing in last month's presentation was one individual, and I don't think he represents all the pickleball players. Because a lot of the pickleball players are my friends. I played tennis with them before. I even played them. But what I heard was, I need these nets put down tomorrow. I need these, I need this court painted over. What I heard was, I need to play pickleball tomorrow.
Mr. Desog.
What I heard was, I, I, I. And what we're about is we. Those of us at Alamoana always think about we.
Thank you. You want to go? Sorry, just really great. You said four of the 10 courts. Can you?
Or the 10 courts on the Maoka side, four, one, two, three, and four have been out for four months. The lighting has been out for four months. And I've complained to the city, you know, called them, I didn't, I went short of calling my old boss the mayor, but.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Aloha. My name's Kyle Burdis and I come here to speak for the pickleball community. But I also want to mention that I come from a prominent tennis family and grew up in the tennis community. And I don't personally think any courts, tennis courts should be taken away at all. But I think we should all work together as a movement to build dedicated facilities for pickleball users. And at the end of the day, we have land, a central regional park, lots of land. We have, even at Alamoana, we have land, even in downtown. We just have to work together. All of this group here in this room has to unite together to unify the movement so that we are coexisting and not fighting with each other. Because I love tennis. I, I watch it on TV. I play it occasionally. I'm not great at it, but I'm a pickleball guy now and I, I do want to exist together. And I think everybody had a lot of positive things to say, but we can shape and bend analytics and metrics any which way we want to. At the end of the day, it's about us working together for the greater movement of our sports. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. Brett Eberhart, I'm representing a bunch of pickleball players that can't be here from Alamoana or Kaukako. Just want to present some facts. This isn't going to be emotionally based. It's just a factual based, some stuff out there. There's a huge glaring disparity that we need to help resolve. On March 2nd, 2023, the mayor's office announced 18 parks with undereupolized courts to be converted to pickleball. Are not currently on that list. In April, they removed one tennis court due to public input. Kehe Lagoon was built in 2023 with 12 courts, but no working lights. As of today, three out of the 17 parks were completed after a year and a half. At this rate, it will take several years for remaining dedicated pickleball courts to be built. Out of 95 parks on Oahu, only four have dedicated pickleball courts with permanent nets. Disparity in the urban core are 10 tennis courts at Alamoana, four courts at Kapilani, 10 courts at Diamond Head Tennis Center. There are two dedicated pickle courts at Mother Waldron. That's 24 tennis carts to two pickleball courts. DPR has lined parks for multi-court use with the volleyball and basketball. Only one tennis center, the Diamond Head Tennis Center, added lines five years ago as a result of neighborhood resolution. There's a lot of professional pickleball players here on island and we're looking for places to play. We travel a lot to the mainland to play and we're competing. We're doing very well. All we're asking for is a facility for us to do well and compete. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Hi. Good morning, board. My name is Sue Eberhart. I'd like to clarify a couple of things. The hitting tennis wall in Alamoana in September 23, 2023, one year ago, pretty much, the pickleball players were banned from the tennis hitting wall. And that tennis hitting wall was never an official pickleball area. For seven to eight years, people went there unofficially, chalk lines, brought their own nets, and played pickleball there, sharing that one tennis hitting wall. Only since March of this year, after a petition of 2,500 pickleball advocates signed it, the DPR agreed to meet with the parties involved and they agreed that they would officially let pickleball be played there. Now, from March of this year to just maybe about two weeks ago, it was finally approved after Chair Tommy Waters signed the paperwork and sent it to us. And then the funding of those lines were community-based. It was from the community. It was not Department of Parks and Recs like how it was in the news. That was incorrect. So now people were saying earlier that they have the tennis wall. They have this. They have that. They just got it painted using the community funds just this past weekend. And now they can play on it. But we're still sharing that area with the heading of the tennis. So people can still go there because there are no permanent nets there. Now imagine if the roles were reversed, how would tennis players feel if you had to chalk your own lines and bring your own nets for seven to eight years in a small confined area? And they should be happy about that. The public courts are not meant to serve one specific group or be a source of income for any organization. They are for everyone to use. And the most recent survey conducted by DPR shows that the public does not support prioritizing paid lessons over general public use. That's what the courts are there for, for general public use. And we just want to share. And we just want to share. DPR, Nate Sirota even came on news, and he said, "Sharing is caring." So that's where, if, but your words were, you said, "Sharing is caring." Let's see it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Everhart. Do we have any other community testimony? Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. The, um, thank you, Alala, as well for being here so we can actually go over what everyone said, and hopefully we can come with a solution. We may most likely have a separate meeting outside of our board meeting to discuss this. So we'll let the public know as well.
And outside of the Action Committee as well, again, we have three months planned of different things that have come up to the Action Committee. So when we do hold a meeting, again, we'll make sure that the people that have shared are informed of when that meeting will be, but it will be a special meeting specifically for this issue. My goal is to hopefully take all of this and present a potential solution, and that will be a draft. Just to keep reiterating that, that again, we'll continue to collect public input like an adaptive test until we find something that, you know, is closer to a solution that we can, again, find collective success in. And I think that's, again, whoever shared it is an important piece of the puzzle as well.
I'd just like to, hello? Hello, hello, thank you. I'd just like to add on to what Member Davis said, is that we're all in this together. The parks are for everybody. It has to be equal. But I encourage both groups to keep pounding the pavement with your politicians and the Department of Parks and Rec. Because they are the ultimately, Parks and Rec is really the ultimate ones to make the decision. We're here in advisory capacity, as Member Davis said earlier. We like hearing what you're saying. We support both sides, at least I do. And we just want to help you get what you want, what you deserve. Alamoana is the people's park, so it needs to be for all the people. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to agency reports. Thank you, everyone. Okay, agency reports. HCDAs, Francine Murray couldn't make it this evening, but she would like everyone to know that the next HDA board meeting is on October 2nd. I believe that is also, that'll also appear in some of our legislators' reports this evening.
Excuse me, Chair.
Again, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening.
Um, excuse me, Chair. Chair Lee, can you hear me? It's Kim Coco. I'm just pointing out that there are some people online who have their hands raised.
I sent some testimony, and then my former associate, I spoke for twenty-five.
Okay, moving on to Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation. I saw Ms. Marissa Gonzales.
Hello, hi there. Good evening, Chair. Kathleen Lee, board members and community members. My name is Marissa Gonzalez, and I'm with the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation. Joining me this evening is Patrick Watson from HART's contractor Frank V. Caluccio Construction. I'll go ahead with my updates first regarding city center guideway and stations contracts. Last month, Johnny shared that we awarded a major contract to Tudor Perini Corporation for the design and construction of the next segment. This includes, excuse me, six rail stations at about three miles of elevated rail from Middle Street Transit Center to Civic Center Station. Construction is expected to begin in 2025. Progress for the airport guideway in stations. Core systems equipment installation is over ninety-eight percent complete. Actually, it's ninety-nine percent complete, I heard today. So we anticipate trial running to start in the first quarter of 2025. And then anticipated operational readiness and transfer of assets to DTS late 2025. Next, moving on to utility relocation updates. HART utility relocation contractors continue working along Dillingham and downtown to clear the path ahead for our guideway and stations contractor Tudor Perini. For Dillingham utility relocation, completion is expected in the first quarter of 2026. For downtown utility relocation, due to unexpected utility conflicts, the timeline has been extended through early 2025. However, this does not impact the overall project schedule. That's my update for tonight. Thank you, Chair and board members, for your time. For more information about HART, please, please visit HonoluluTransit.org. Now I will go ahead and hand it over to Patrick Watson for traffic update.
Hi, mahalo, Marissa. Chair Lee and members of the board and community. Patrick Watson with Honolulu Consulting. On behalf of Frank V. Caluccio, just to provide you a brief update. As Marissa mentioned, Caluccio's contract has been extended by HART through the first quarter of 2025. So some of the scope of their work has changed. And in a nutshell, some of the work that was initially asked of them through the contract was de-sculpted, and some additional work was added to the contract, which is why the, the change in the schedule has taken place. So we are currently working, and just as a reminder of the project limits, from the corner of Kaahie Street and Dillingham Boulevard, then we, the project limits go all the way through downtown, past Chinatown, up Palakuaula, and end at Cook Street near Mother Wolden Park. So the type of work that they're doing, for those of you who traverse that corridor, probably know, we're still doing a lot of underground trench work, relocating the Hiko Utilities water lines. In fact, we have a water line relocation scheduled near the Puhio Federal Courthouse and the Kehe Malani State Building, October 5th, which we notified them about, temporary water disruption. But other than that, they're doing some pot-homing along the areas down from South Street over to Cook Street. And that's kind of to explore the underground conditions. They're given a set of plans to determine, you know, what's under there, but they have to visually inspect to make sure that what's on the plans meet what they're actually going to be constructing underground. So that's sort of the nature of the work that's taking place right now. And that about completes the update for Caluccio at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick Watson and Ms. Marissa Gonzalez for your heart report. Honolulu Board of Water Supply, are you online? Okay, moving on to elected official reports. Ashton Stallings from the governor's office.
We're actually going to let Kayla lead this one. Hello, um, I believe Ashton introduced me last time, but just to reintroduce myself, my name is Kayla. I'm with the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, and me and Ashton are the District 11 Governor's Representatives. So as part of that, we're going to share some important messages from the Office of the Governor, as well as some fun highlights from this month's Governor's Newsletter. So to start, we want to share from the Office of the Governor, as well as the Department of Health. They are recommending the recently updated 2024 to 2025 flu and COVID-19 vaccines for all persons six months of age and older. So the new flu vaccine protects against the H1N1, H3N2, and B Victoria flu strains that are likely to circulate this year. And the new COVID vaccines will address the recent strains and variants, including the Omicron variant. And these are available at your local vaccination providers. And then in addition to these new vaccines, we also want to share that U.S. households are once again able to request four free COVID-19 self-test kits starting December 23rd, 2024, which are available at covidtest.gov. And then as for the newsletter highlights for this month, we want to share that the Federal Department of Commerce has approved the state's BEAD program, B-E-A-D, as well as a $149 million grant for the program, which aims to build necessary infrastructure to basically provide affordable, dependable, high-speed internet to underserved communities across the state on every island. So that was a really exciting thing. And then also the Hawaii State Energy Office has just launched their digital and interactive version of the 2023 decarbonization report. So for anyone who's unfamiliar with that report, it focuses on the state's goal to sequester more atmospheric carbon and greenhouse gases that, that emitted by no later than 2045. So online users can view the report, the results and key findings, as well as recommendations and follow-ups for state action and policy over the coming years. And finally, the University of Hawaii just broke an extramural funding record for the third consecutive year, receiving $615 million in federal and private grants that will be used to support their research and training facilities across the state.
Thank you. Thank you, Ashton and Kayla.
And also the newsletter, I put the link in the chat, so it's available there. And if you guys have any questions, we're all ears. Take them back to the appropriate sources.
Thank you for being here this evening. Next, we have Mayor's Representative, Mr. Ben Sullivan. And on behalf of the board, we also want to congratulate you on your new position as in the Office of Climate Change.
Just a moment, please. The bigger one will do it. There we go. Perfect. Board members, it's good to see you. It's been a long night, I'll try to be quick. I'm Executive Director for the City's Office of Climate Change Sustainability Resiliency. I have a bunch of prepared remarks, but a lot of this information was covered. So I, I just want to touch on a couple of things that I think might be most pertinent to the board. First of all, I, I so appreciate the commitment you have to the public. I, I think, you know, it's, it's exhausting work to do this, right? We, we all know that. I think Councilmember Say can tell us probably more than anyone, it's exhausting work, but it's work that is, is really valued and deserved, and our community deserves to have this representation. It's hard. But you know, my, my colleague and friend Rene Asbiao was on, was on presenting. And I think one of the challenges we always have with these processes is that we have a second to talk about something that really deserves ours, right? And, and I can tell you that Rene does do the outreach. I've seen it. They do a lot of work. They push a lot of material out. And, and yes, we can do more PSAs, and we can do more social media, but the question is always one of timing. And, and it's, and it's really difficult because we do go through extensive processes for review. We do have very detailed and appropriately very scrutinized procurement processes because we want to make sure your tax dollars are spent wisely. And those, those things extend the life of projects. And so the result sometimes is a misalignment between the public and I think what you said, the real-time needs of, of people on the ground and, and what's happening in the city. And so I, I would love to explore those conversations with you more because I think there's a lot to learn from each other. But I, I will say that, that the, the work being done is very much in, in service to the public, and, and it, it requires more than a singular back and forth in terms of a, a kind of a verbal commentary. It requires people to study the work. It requires us to look at each other's data, to understand each other. Just like we had with, with pickleball and tennis tonight. I thought there was, there was kind of a teary-eyed moment where everyone said, hey, we just need to get along and work it out. And that's what I heard at the end, was people just saying, we're going to put the work in, and we're going to figure out a solution. So instead of boring you with, with the many responses, I will summarize because it is important to summarize what was shared. The, the Department of Parks and Recreation did share more information about the pickleball concerns. I think that's probably, I think people in this room probably are more aware of what they've said about it than I am. So I'll just say that they are working very hard. They're not taking away any tennis right now. But they're, they're, they're definitely studying the options. And, and although we do move slow, we are moving, and we, we have heard people, and we know that's important. The, the Alamoana Beach Park, I thought there was going to be a conversation tonight about dog park issues, and somehow that got lost in the, in the chaos. I know that, that DPR did respond, and they, you know, they do have a position that Alamoana Park is not a dog park. And that, that's after a, a really long history of looking at the issues there. There's talk, you know, there's, there's always young children playing in the sand, and there's concerns about what might happen if there's a dog leaves their business in the sand and it's not seen, right? You can kind of imagine the mess that, 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 that involves, and the health concern, right? That that involves, there's, there's really large events there where it's really hard to, to manage the extra potential risk and liability of a dog running through twenty thousand people who are doing some other activity. So it is a place where the city at this point in time has chosen no dogs. And the beauty of this process is that that could change, right? You all can, you all can weigh in, and you all can make a difference on that. I would be happy to answer any questions if there are. I would also love to talk about how we can improve the process because I can see your passion. Mariano, I really appreciate your perspective on, on complete streets. I have a very different one, but I would, I would value a conversation with you about what, how do we, how do we come together, and how do we understand each other better? So with that, I'm just going to stop because that was, that was more time than I should have taken to begin with.
I have, I have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. There, Mariana.
Yeah, no, thanks for that following up. And I really appreciate what you, what you do for the mayor. Because the whole process of this neighborhood board is to be the eyes and ears for the mayor. And that's what Frank Bossi wanted back in the seventies, because I was on the first neighborhood board back then. Wow. So as you heard, the concerns for the pickleball and tennis, and you already know that there's some sites that's out there that have no lights. So if we could spread the wealth, get this park and recreation, you know, maybe get some in-of-year funds or something, and prioritize one park and put the lights up, and then eventually do another one. And then that can help resolve, you know, the concerns. Now, on the dog park, you know, I understand about the whole Alamoana Park. What this board has presented several years ago, was not the whole Alamoana Park. What we do is we have a dog park within the park, a fenced-in area that you can put some obstacles so the dog can train and jump and do all those things, like when you drive down to Hawaii Kai, and you get down Hawaii Kai off of Kalani on the highway, and you just take that turn on Hawaii Kai Drive, right there in the corner, there's a dog park. At night, it turns into a cat park. And, and because they got the Bus Transit there. So that's what we would like to see at what this board had presented before. And that is to have a fenced-in area where families can come and bring their pets. And then the other thing is now we also have service dogs, right? Comfort dogs. And so when they come to the park, they need a place for those dogs to go to. And so that's what we're, we're looking at, and we want to present that. So is it possible to go back into the records and find our resolution? If not, we, I will try to dig it up and re-present that because that's what I think we're looking at at Alamoana Park. A dog park in the park.
Thank you, Mr. Mariana.
We did have a, um, hello? Um, we did have a chance to briefly talk about it at our Action Committee and talk about it with Director Thielen as well. And there is a potential area that the Parks Department is looking at within Alamoana to do a fenced-in dog park. I think the one thing that has come up is, you know, a lot of people walk their dogs for exercise with their dog. They're not trying to take their dog to a dog park and then stand there. You know, like, dogs need exercise, but some people, you know, the dog needing exercise is a, is a way to encourage them to exercise. And I know people that utilize that, especially for mental health reasons, too. And I think, you know, it's trying to figure out where are people allowed to walk their dogs as both, again, exercise for the dog, but also exercise for the individual. Because that is something I think we see residents participating in. But we did talk about that again. We've also had some testimony come in, in, not in favor of dog parks or dogs in Alamoana. So you know, what seems like might have been a more straightforward path is not, which is fun. Yeah, well, and that's one of the things that, you know, I present as like one pathway where dogs are allowed. It's not off, you know, again, we can talk about that further. And, and I did just draft up a quick resolution that we can present, you know, sometime soon after chance to do it. But, um, you know, I really would like to connect to, again, just with the Parks Department, with the mayor's office, potentially at looking from the park's side of what potential plans are, where there might be potential options. And especially in, you know, Kaukau, I am curious about hearing from the HDA about what development, you know, because in combination with the parks, one of the main purposes of that Makai side of Kaukau is sustainability and recreation. So I think, you know, wanting to, to see what the plans are and see if there might be, you know, room for a potential solution there as well. So I'll try and remember to reach out quickly before it was, but yeah, before some of these other meetings, you know, occur, I think just to get a better, clearer picture. And I've done a really, really tried to comb over the data that has been presented to us, including going to the. that has been presented to us, including going to the courts myself and playing with a friend and counting personally. So, you know, trying to collect it, but open to input, too, from the Mayor's Office. You know, if you have any suggestions on what might be a solution.
But I appreciate the comments, and you all are working really hard. I'm going to stay out of that one and just kind of be a facilitator of information if I can, just because we have, there are so many issues, as we all know. So, so very much appreciate the opportunity to talk to the board. If there's any other questions, otherwise, I can get out of your way and let you continue your business.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Sullivan, for being here this evening.
Take care.
Councilmember Calvin Say. And congratulations on your recent award from the Hawaii State Association of Counties. It's a lifetime achievement award, so thank you for all you do for the community.
No, thank you very much for your public service. I'll be very brief. Ben has said it all. But more importantly, in the link, in the chat, are the links in regards to my highlights of the newsletter. Then I have the announcement about December 21st, the pickleball courts. The other big one for the residents of Kakaako and Alamoana for those private landowners who own properties, if you do qualify for the real property tax exemption, you better go and check it out, because it is a great increase of 20,000. Website links, I think the board members before in the past talked about the Alawai watershed one with the Corps of Engineers. Now, you have the Complete Streets. But I would also like to invite you, on behalf of Rene folks, that there's a meeting on Wednesday, 9:25, 24, at 5:30 to 7:30 at the Blaisell. And this will be in regards to pedestrian crisis in America. It's a big issue for all of us, because of the incidence of accidents that have occurred. So, those are some of the website links that I have. And other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. For Laurie, last night was the Fort Town Hall meeting that the Department, not the Department, the Comedian Planning had throughout the County of Oau, on the development plans. This being my fourth year on the Council, it's really fascinating for me. And I'll summarize very quickly, that I tried my best to educate all seven neighborhood boards that I do attend, from the state's jurisdiction to the county's jurisdiction. And I'm happy that the residents here tonight learned about Hawaii Community Development Authority, who was the developer for all this area, and not the city. And I brought this up last month, Ms. Everhart, that it was only this year that a lot of the infrastructure was transferred over to the city. But with that, I'm happy the two young ladies who are here from the governor, anytime you folks do a mandate to the counties, fund it. It's always unfunded. Great. So, in essence, what I'm saying, thank you very much for the opportunity of meeting all of you. You know, I can tell people, like, the first Wednesday of the month, Manoa. First Thursday, Moiliili Makali, the Alapono Bridge. Second Wednesday, it's Palolo Valley and the Slide. Second Thursday, it's St. Louis Heights, Diamond Head, Kapo Hulu. The third Wednesday of the month is Kaimaki. The third Thursday is Makiki, Tanlis. And finally, the fourth Tuesday of the month, which is the seventh, the best, maybe second to the best. Now, I'm on. But those are just my thoughts for this evening. I'll be here for the next two months, and then I'll say aloha to all of you. But one thing I have to say to all of you, and I wish more of our residents were here, it was very humbling and comforting to hear how everyone came together, which is part of the aloha spirit that we all have. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we have Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam's office. His office representative, Robyn Henske, stated that they're hosting a little fire and community meeting for the Papukalaya area residents, so they are unable to be here tonight. But they did send their newsletters, so hopefully we'll be able to upload that soon. And they also addressed a constituent concern to repair a broken catch basin at the entrance of 716 Cook Street. Next, we have Representative Scott Nishimoto. I see Office Representative Taylor Doughty online.
Aloha, Chair. Thank you, folks, for hosting the meeting today. Just wanted to send our regards, and we're happy to take any information back to my boss. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Adrian Tam.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. You have my newsletter there, and my newsletter is posted at the Capitol website under my name. I can take any questions that you may have for me.
Yeah, this is Lynn Mariano. What can you do to help the pickleball and tennis court area? And also, as we talked about, the potential to have the city to explore again a dog park in the Alamoana Park?
I can address the first one. You know, I play pickleball and tennis, so I honestly am really happy if there is more courts for everyone. So, but that, that again, is also a city issue. And at the state, we don't have the jurisdiction over that. In terms of a dog park, I am aware that dogs are not allowed at Alamoana Beach Park anyway. So, I don't, I don't know about the idea of a dog park in a place where dogs are not allowed.
Okay, so, again, the question was, what can you do to help us? I know that you're at the state level, but just like Councilman Say said, you know, when we do these enforcement, you know, we need to send a calla as well, so we can have some enforcement. So, you heard the residents tonight. If you were in earlier, there's this passion for pickleball, and there's passion for tennis. So, one of the things is, there's some parks that's available. There's no lighting. And so, what can be done at your level to help facilitate that, to put more lights on these courts, so that more pickleball can be played?
Again, many of these courts are on city property, so it's up to the city to fund them. We do not mandate them to have tennis courts or pickleball courts. I'll take the next question, please.
Thank you, Representative Adrian Tam. Moving on to House Speaker Scott Seki or his office representative Frank Rogazinski, who had sent an email. Is he online as well? Okay, we can just upload their newsletter. I think they also wanted to bring to light the HCD meeting happening on October 2nd. Senator Shan Marawaki's office, I see Charles Izumoto online.
Hey, everyone. You have our newsletter. There's a link to it. I just wanted to point out, in our newsletter, we've been working hard with Major Okamoto and a lot of other agencies to work on the homeless issue. And there's a really important HCD Kakaako meeting coming up on October 2nd. They're considering adopting the revised rules for the Makai Plan. And then, also, there's an agenda item on our favorite Chun Brothers issue with the private streets. So, there's a link to that, that agenda, and then you can take a look at that, and we encourage you to submit testimonies. I can take back any questions if you have them. Mahalo.
Thank you, Charles, for your report this evening. Board, any questions?
Um, yeah, is the Makai Plan the official, like, the one that they're going to be reviewing available on the HCDO website? I'm assuming it is. I just want to make sure that I can review it.
I, yeah, I think there's a link to the proposed rules that the Executive Director created based on a lot of community input. And I'm not the best source for that, but when you go to Craig, then he'll tell you exactly how it, how it goes. But my understanding is they went to the community, they got a lot of input, they created some revisions to the rules. And the Director proposes it to the board, and then the board ultimately decides whether they want to adopt it or not. And it's the continuing agenda item is that, whether or not, you know, what's the status of it? So, that's my understanding of it. And Craig is the best source for that one.
Thank you, Mr. Charles Izumoto. Here's Congressman Ed Kesar, his representative. I don't see anyone online. Announcements, we do our social media accounts. We have the Aloha Festivals for our parade. They mentioned that in a previous board meeting that's happening on September 28th, 2024. The Night Market is happening on November 2nd, 2024. And again, our Neighborhood Board meetings are every fourth Tuesday of the month. The next one is on October 28th. Next Action Committee meeting is scheduled for October 10th. And our meetings can be seen through Alelo. The links are on there. And again, Alelo, thank you again for being here this evening. This meeting of the Alamoana Kakaako Neighborhood Board is adjourned at 8:23 PM.